Order document, the time is 6:30, if you can stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, valid, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you and welcome. Tori, if I would, welcome back. Good to see you back at the table.
Good to be back, everybody.
If you would take us through a mindfulness, I would appreciate that.
So, as we all learned at our joint meeting, we take this time to remind ourselves why we're here, who we're here for, and to get ourselves grounded in governance. So, everybody just find a nice comfortable seat and take a nice big deep breath in. And then you're gonna breathe out.
So, a couple of items here from an agenda review and adjustments. Section 6, subsection A2, the discussion approval, the contract with RIAR. We're gonna strike that as an item tonight that doesn't need to be done, doesn't need to be on here. We do have just a small change to note when we get down to section 6B3 in the transportation agreement. There's just a small change there, we'll mention that. I think that's, that's all of them. Anything else, anybody, agenda items to adjust? Okay, focus on learning this evening.
Yes, so, it's been awhile since we've had our early learning leaders at the board level to give you an update on the programming that's been happening. And so, we have Robin Hood and Maybelene Lopez, who have done wonderful work over the past six years or so to really improve our early learning programs and are starting to strategize for the future when we have more capacity on the campus to serve more of our students in pre-K and maybe even younger than that, possibly. So, it's all yours. The clicker is there too, if you want to use it, you got it.
Thank you. Hi, everybody, welcome back. Tori, thank you for that, the whole part about being thankful, grateful. We have had a really good start to be here. When Sean introduced, I was gonna introduce Maybelene and tell you the good news. She completed the Smelling Leadership for Academy for Early Learning last year, so we're really excited and happy about it. So, couching in what Tori was just talking about, which is the Winuski School District end statement, we too in preschool want kids to be healthy, productive, and live successful lives. And we really feel like we are building a really strong foundation for kids to set them on the right path to really be college and career-ready and be successful members of our community. And tonight, we're really going to couch all the information that we share with you in our three goals that help us reach those ends. And you know what they are: college and career readiness, healthy, productive, and successful lives, and local, and global community engagement. Supporting goal one, we're really happy that we have two programs onsite, and I believe you're aware of that, but we have our Winuski Early Childhood Program that's at JFK. And I think the history of that, Rebecca, correct me, it's been around at least 25 years. So, really a great program that we have developed. And then we have our new Early Learning Center that is now probably in its fifth year. And we are very happy to say that we are working this year with 28 different partner programs. They happen to all be in Chittenden County. And we'll talk more tonight about just how we couch all the things that we do in the Vermont Early Learning Standards as well. So, our Winuski Early Childhood Program, as we said, it's onsite, it's a Head Start collaborative, and it has an AM and PM program. And that program can serve up to 30 kids, 15 in a morning program and 15 in the afternoon. And you can see what we have for staffing there. And our Early Learning Center also serves 15 and 15. And you can see, we have staffing there. And we'll talk at the end, so you'll know how much staffing is supported by your tax dollars in Winuski and who are our collaborative staff.
Here's a snapshot of just some of our professional development. Robin and I coordinate all planning and of the professional development, as well as getting input from some of our professional staff, like our SLP and occupational therapists, to really do a specific preschool support and learning. It continues on. We also have staff take a survey, so you can see areas that they would like to grow in, review all of their individual needs of continued planning to grow in the area. Preschool is very new and really getting into what is going to be happening in the classroom. As Robin said earlier, we have 28 partner programs and really building a positive relationship with them. All of these kids will be going to kindergarten, so we support those teachers and the students there in curriculum planning, as well as if they needed additional support.
So, these are programs that students, the early students go to based on either availability, parental discretion?
Yes.
So, Winuski sends kids to all these places?
And they access the Universal Pre-K Act, Lend $66 as well.
Right.
Yes. And all these programs take assessment on each student, and that's what we get to review, and it helps us with kindergarten placement and deciding if there's additional needs.
So, for Universal Pre-K, we did Act 62 for many years, as you know. We were really proud to be a leader in Vermont, and we were one of the early adopters of Act 166. We wanted to just show you how much it's changed over the past seven years. When Maybelene started, we had six partner programs, and we had 15 kids in those partner programs. To now, we have families participating in 28 with 120 kids that are in early learning programs. That's a really significant increase. The other thing that we noticed is that in 2012, we had about 18 students on IEPs. To today, where we have about 35 students in preschool. And that's really good news. That means when more kids are out in programs, more eyes are on kids, and we are able to do early intervention and intervene early and give kids what they need. So, we're really excited about having all of those. And sometimes, we've had more than that, partner programs. Also want to just point out that all of those kids, it's great that we have 120, but as I'm sure Sean has shared with you before and you've read in the board reports, we have a waiting list right now of about 30 families who either, it's a barrier to go out of Winuski to try to get to a partner program, or maybe afford that, and we don't have enough space right now on campus for that. So, that's why we're so excited about the building project as well.
And so, that will change, that will change that.
Yes, yes, yes.
And these are three and four-year-olds?
Yes, three and four-year-olds. And as I said earlier, we really work hard to follow the Vermont framework for assessment, for instruction, for curriculum, so that everything that we're doing is aligned with our partners, so that when, as Maybelene said, our kids come to kindergarten, they've all been exposed to similar things. They've all done the same assessments, and we're able to really screen for kids that might have some issues. This is just a quick visual with, if you look at the top, really, it's what we have in one of our goals about healthy kids, and it's really looking at physical well-being, social-emotional well-being, cognitive, all approaches to learning, and just how, when you're assessing kids, you're looking at their learning environment, you're looking at them as a child, and going all down to the bottom where you're really also working closely with the stakeholders: the parents, the teachers, leaders, policymakers, and really making good decisions about kids. So, we really take this charge seriously, and we really work to make sure that our kids have what they need.
So, Robin, those domains at the top, those are what's measured in the kindergarten readiness survey?
Yes, they are, yeah. There are also domains that are measured if we have a child, that we have suspicion may have a developmental delay, so we are looking in those specific domains as well.
And all preschools use the Vermont Early Learning Standards, and really helps with providing a roadmap for intentional teaching. And this would be regardless of where students are, at a partner program, onsite, getting that same consistency to help us with developing curriculum.
We use creative curriculum, which is a standard-based curriculum, and the assessments that we use, that our partner programs also use are listed there. TSG, or Teaching Strategies Goal, is one of the assessments that's used. And part of our responsibility of Act 166 is to review those assessments, even though those children might not be here, and they may be somewhere else. And Maybelene reviews those to look at someone that may be falling behind, that we may need to evaluate. And that really helps. And then you can see, we have other assessments that we may be assessing our program, we may be assessing our classroom, and how we are interacting with kids. We do a lot in preschool with the environment, and how do we have an environment that's really developed for preschool-aged kids, three and four, which is, as you know, different than what the needs are of older kids.
Well, does it measure play and social and emotional development, as well as kindergarten readiness?
And those are, it's taught through play, so it is one of those, in play, how do we make sure we're providing?
So, it is play-based?
It is all play-based, yes.
Yep. And the class assessment scoring system also is play-based as well. So, our second goal, healthy, productive, and successful lives. Maybelene's gonna talk a little bit about child fine, which really falls under that.
So, all schools are required to find children who have disabilities and then provide educational support specific to those needs. And we, and I organize multiple events to screen children's development here at the school, as well as one, as Robin talked about, review, I review all 120 of those Teaching Strategies Goals. And then, if any flags come up, all programs are welcoming, and I'll go do a visit, and we'll talk about how do we make them, help them make the gains that are needed. And so, we'll continue ongoing referrals from doctors. So, it's a lot of collaboration with multiple outside agencies, but to really look at all
And the last goal, local and global community engagement. As Maybelene was saying, collaboration is key. And when we think about global engagement, we think about our classrooms that are very diverse, with over 50% of our students being English language learners, which is higher than us as a district. And all the people that we have to interact with them, their parents, their families, all of that. But the collaboration that we do is pretty significant. We meet monthly with the Head Start leadership. We collaborate around policy, procedures, curriculum, assessment. We, we take our collaborative relationship very, very seriously, and we feel a responsibility. These are our children in Winuski, and we want to be very involved in curriculum. And we have done a lot of work on helping really develop curriculum that all kids can access, no matter what end of the spectrum you are on, that they can really engage. So, you can see, you know, whether it's our special ed team, whether it's Building Bright Futures, I'm on the steering committee there, Maybelene's on the council. We really have tried to represent the Winuski School District well. Maybelene is part of the Act 166 coordinators, really doing a lot with a lot of different And I think that, that the collaboration is really critical. And one of the things we didn't want to leave out that we think is the most important, and that is the family collaboration. And we work really hard with our families, we want them to feel welcome. Maybelene does a survey at the end of every school year with families, we want their feedback, we use their feedback, we share it with staff. It's really important to us. So, that's another thing that I think really makes a difference for, for our programs. And it makes parents feel welcome when they know that you really care about what they think.
Who does all of this work? And we have such unbelievable staff here that really have a focus and understand how important early childhood education is. We have our Winuski School District professional staff, not only Robin and I, and the support of everyone, our new physician of Holly, so we have a special educator helping with evaluations, as well as our speech-language pathology.
And Ada, our other specialist.
I am curious about staffing. I've heard there's like a statewide shortage of early childhood educators. Are you experiencing that as well?
Head Start is trying to fill their last teaching position, and it's really been taking a long time. And so, I think, on the one hand, we're growing significantly across the state in early learning. The, the other side of that is the university and other colleges can't keep up yet with getting them out there. So, I think over time, and, and there's also some grant work from the agency where they have other ways for people to earn degrees, but it's, it's experienced across the state.
I think, I just want to add quickly, I think that point is gonna be a really important one that gets debated beginning in this next legislative session, because the indications that I've been hearing are that early learning is gonna be a big agenda item pushed by the governor.
Should be.
And, right, and so, one of the things I think the field is gonna say is, we don't have enough qualified people to serve the needs that you're proposing, how do we get there? And who's gonna pay them? Right? Are they gonna fold into the, to the, to the K-12 system? And if so, how does that get funded? You know, or are they gonna be, is it gonna be staffed differently and funded differently?
That's a question. What is the average salary on these early educators? Like, what is, I mean, I feel like there's a lot of people, but the question is, is it other factors that prevent them?
I think it's, what Sean meant, what Sean said was, if they are our staff, and they're our professional staff, then they're part of our agreement, and they're paid as the same as all teachers on a teacher's scale. When they're working with other partners, whether it be Head Start, whether it's the Y, they're paid very differently. Ours are paid by the hour, it's an hourly rate. And I think the frustration sometime, when you're that teacher, and you might have a support staff in your room, working with a child with intensive needs, who could be making what you're making, possibly even more, or a little less, and you have the same responsibility. So, it's, I think Sean is exactly right, we've got to figure out a way to shore that up.
It's not a livable wage.
No.
Thirty years ago, I taught preschool.
And we don't employ any of the teachers. It all comes through Head Start. And that was also a cost-effective way for us to get into the market six, seven years ago, and to create more capacity for students. It's, it's probably not sustainable in the long term.
And if we truly believe we're starting to really pay more attention to how important early education is, then it needs to be a livable profession. You need, it is a profession that matters, has resounding results from beginning to ending of a child's life. It should be professionally paid.
No, and I think that's where I'm probably going, is more like, how do we, as school boards, be better advocates to be giving livable wages, and also getting the state to real, I mean, we all know that the state has a limited pie, right? And, and, and we really need the state to start making tough decisions and stop trying to be everything to everyone. And we really believe in this, and, and as a school board, we should, you know, take the lead. If we're the leaders in this and getting Winuski out ahead, then let's start giving those livable wages, and also, and because the cost of living here is ridiculous. You know, I think it's, I find it hard to say that there's not qualified people. I think the real issue is, is that we're not giving livable wages and giving a chance for people to stay in Vermont, to survive on the wages.
And we do, our teachers have the qualifications, and I think it's, they're not our teachers, which means we don't have control over their pay to the same degree as we would if we were negotiating.
So, to your point of advocacy, in October, we're gonna have some of our legislators from the area, not just Winuski, but from the area, and we'll develop a list of topics here, but that obviously would be one of the ones that is a concern. So, that would be one way to get the advocacy in.
Yes. And as we were just speaking of, these, these are a list of our Head Start staff, who still have an open position, and they really run each classroom in, in collaboration with us, so.
And, and they're a great group of people.
We also have our support staff, that really also help us continue on to really get the support all students need. So, without them, that would also be difficult. And they really are on from the moment they walk off that bus in the morning to when we're going back onto the bus, and it's a list of some of our support staff.
So, we have talked to you about how we, we have had a great year, and Maybelene and I have done some amazing collaboration over the seven years together. And Sean also wanted us to just share with you some of the challenges that we see, so that you have an idea of some of the things that we're dealing with and trying to figure out, and just trying to support each other with. And, and one sad challenge is the loss of the Winuski Family Center as a preschool classroom. Everyone knows that they have been educating Winuski kids for many years, and that's 16 full-day slots. So, that was a big loss. It's still a challenge, and I think this will come up in legislature again this year, that preschool children who attend school outside of your city, you're not required to provide special ed services. And even if we were, then we would really have to think about, how do you get over to Williston? How do you get over to Shelburne? And I've been working a lot with the special ed directors about if the law changes, and if we can go across, how we could be collaborative on that, and how we could kind of share the burden, and, you know, if I have a kid in Shelburne, how can they serve that child? If they had someone that was in another program in Winuski, how could we help out? So, we, we are having these conversations that if the rules change around that, what we will do. Another challenge, right now, we have 30 families, as I said, and this is the beginning of the year, so we expect that that will rise. And another challenge is just when you develop early childhood programs, we really fall under the Vermont rules for licensing, and it is very, very intense of all the requirements of that. And so, being couched in an elementary school, we have to be creative about certain things: ratio, or we can't be out on the playground with kindergarteners, because that changes ratio. And so, we collaborate around, how can we do different things so that we're still following rules? And just the last one is that with the, the really intense growth of Act 166 over the years, the amount of time it takes Maybelene, myself, people in our office to really, we've developed a good system around processing payments, but still, applications, registration, attendance, all of those things are things that we work to make better. We think things will get better with Power School in terms of registration, electronic, and attendance, and things like that. But they're all things that we work on day-to-day.
Before you flip.
Yeah.
So, I think particularly the second bullet, serving students on IEPs, and then the last one around administration of program, those are really good opportunities for regional collaboration that, and there's already, there's some that happens.
Yeah, yeah.
But Act 166 regulations get in the way of some of that.
Of the collaboration?
Yeah, of the collaboration.
And special ed regulations?
And special ed regulations. And the fact, I, I think because of Act 46, that a lot of our colleagues in the county, some of them were, were going through, Act 77, and then Act 166, and now 173, there's a general lack of capacity to kind of realize those regional collaborations when you're dealing with so much in your own house. So, that's something that, you know, David Young from South Burlington and I, as co-chairs of the, of the Regional Superintendent's Group, which is Franklin, Addison, and Chittenden County, we've begun to talk about that, like, okay, so people are on the back end of 46, we've had 166 for a few years now, we know what we, what's wrong with it, and what we can suggest a remedy. How can we really decide what are some high-leverage items regionally that we can work on together?
So, the future looks exciting. And one of the most exciting things for us is when we see the TruX people in with their big pieces of paper, and they're measuring, and they're looking at different parts of the building, because the capital project really increases our capacity to, to additional classrooms. So, we think that's very exciting. We also are really working to think about how we might collaborate with other providers beyond Head Start, to see what else is out there, what are some other ways that, you know, we can keep our connection with Head Start, but also research what we can do with others to serve kids in a creative way. We believe that the capacity of, that the early learning classrooms will certainly help to reduce that waitlist. We think parents will be happier that they have places for their kids. And we're really hoping with the collaboration with other programs, that we may really be able to meet the needs of, of families. I think it's about five years ago, Maybelene and I did a community needs assessment, and it really showed that families want a variety. There are some that like that half-day and really want time at home with their children in the afternoon. There are some that would really like the school day, and there are some that would really like a workday option. So, when we look ahead to five years, we really want to think about, how can we meet the needs of families and kids in all different ways, and knowing that there's not really that one-size-fits-all. So, I would say, stay tuned, we'll have some kind of a five-year projection and plan that we will be sharing with you, most likely through a board report, but that's some of the stuff we're working on. And lastly, the, the work that we do, and we put in hours and hours, and we get to see the outcomes of just going in the preschools and watching the kids, but we know that we can't do that work without the support that you have all given. The approval of the budgets from the Winuski taxpayers is amazing, and it's really, you know, providing great programming for kids. The new position this year that you approved is, is phenomenal. So, thank you for all of that, and we really look forward, as, as we said, to coming back and sharing with you some of the new things that we're working on. So, do people have any questions or things that you would like us to research for you, or?
Curious question. You started this in 2012 with 15 students, if I can remember. How many are actually still in the school district?
That's a good question. I, I don't know, Alex, but we can certainly take a look at who we had and easily check that with Web2School.
Because they should be around seventh grade?
Six to seventh grade now, if.
Let's see, if they started at, at three or four in 2012. And those are the Act 166 kids?
Right.
Yeah?
I would say six.
You think six would be here, out of those 15?
Five or six, yeah. Which is part of the challenge.
Yeah.
But that's what our data shows generally, from a couple of cohorts over five to six years, it, it, the consistency is around 50%.
Which is, which is pretty interesting, considering, you know, over 100 kids, which we're talking about tonight, and seeing where those kids would be, you know, seven years from now.
Has the demographics of those kids changed a lot, like, from a family standpoint? Like, I mean, assuming 2012, I don't know when the new American population started coming in, and, and really the question is, is the earlier kids who did this have more mobility, parents have more mobility within the district, versus this children that you're working with now may have less mobility? And it's just more on a planning level, you know, as we, and, and we've kind of like, I remember doing a lot of the, the board presentations for the schools about saying, like, how do these two extra schools give you the flexibility? The amazing concept is being able to keep a child from the early learning- amazing concept is being able to keep a child from the early learning all the way to high school and what that means. Questions on, is this a, is this a tool that attracts family aid and tool, is it a retention effort that actually makes it easier for our students who are participating in the early learning program and moving forward?
We can easily check on those 15 students and see if they're here now and then we can talk a little bit about the mobility and think of a way that we might answer that question.
And it's not a question of like leaning down. It's more of a question of like, how do we present our community in a more, like, this is what the exciting things that are happening. This is the thing that can draw families. This is the thing that like is for everybody. Like, I have no doubt that, I mean, I've seen enough of the data that actually shows that the people who stay, develop and do well, it's just like, how do we keep on saying that story? Because in many ways, the challenges of our communities that we have to go dig deeper beyond what the Vermont state will provide as data points because it won't tell the story that we really know what's going on.
One of the statements you just made about this is for everybody is one of the frustrations of parents because Head Start is income-eligible and we don't have a lot of non-income-eligible slots in there. So one of our points that we're really addressing in future planning is how can we have programs that are available for all families? So whether you're upper, middle, middle or low income.
Higher junior secondary.
But how can you have a classroom that's, that's less homogeneous?
Yeah.
It does a whole lot of other things.
Yes, absolutely. We totally agree, which is why we always fight for more non-income-sensitive slots.
And I appreciate you saying that because I think that's a level of diversity that is often ignored and can have an impact early on if we don't actually show that diversity.
And both Sean and I have had conversations with parents who have had that frustration that they would like to have their kids on site as well. So we're working on thinking about ways to address that.
And like I said, from an advocacy standpoint, don't hesitate to figure out how to let us mobilize a community to do that.
Thank you.
Right? I think that is our role here.
Any other questions?
I just have one that I had scratched down and that is among the 28 partners. You said that there is a common framework with which they try to measure all the kids and you get the data. Do you find though that they all do the same job? I gotta believe the individual of the 28 partners, they're like having 28 kids. They're all gonna be different no matter how close they are, right? And so do you find that they're all pretty unique? And when you do find one that falls out, do you have any leverage to give them feedback to fix?
So, and I think that's that big part of why it's so important to build those relationships and to have the time to be at the table to really help with that because they really do. They welcome us and get phone calls all the time. Like, I'm just, I'm having a hard time. I just need you to come in and help me. So to have that relationship where they feel comfortable enough because it can be very difficult to even share that. And I think going through those, it is one of those, even the new regulations, they weren't done until 2015. So it was, and it was like a lot. It wasn't just like I changed a couple of things. So a lot of things changed that they had to now start to learn and go under, which, and then with the shortage of teachers. So there were so many things where those students of ours have to be with that teacher for the full 10 hours. They can't just be in the building. So figuring out all of those things takes time and so far it's been going successful. I think that's because we build those relationships early on.
We have early learning partner meetings that Maybelline attends where all, all of the early learning partners that would like to get together regularly. And then the partner pro, the, the Act 166 coordinators are there and that's a real time where you can really support them. You can think about professional development that they might need. But there's definitely a variation between programs. You know, there are some that have more resources than others or...
Does the star system help that at all?
Yes.
Yes.
How so?
And there's, since there's, you know, from one to five and the difference.
And that's changing as well, the star system. So it should be a little bit easier for some people to get into the business, which has been kind of a barrier for some.
But that's a state-level kind of requirement. So they have people who go into the, to the school and evaluate it and see whether or not it's eligible for a certain number of stars. So there's a, there's inherent, I guess, assumption of quality with those stars.
If you think of other questions, just let Sean know and we can be sure to get you the answer. But we're glad that we were able to share a little snapshot with you all tonight.
Yeah, I was happy to see the challenges slide because all the good things you do, that's interesting and that's nice and, you know, I guess at the end of the day, it's kind of expected that you have some level of success. But when I get down to the challenges piece, that's where I think we can, to Alex's point, I think that's where we can help. That's not to belittle the, the good things, but I mean, that's basically the expectation. But the challenge is sometimes if you need help, you need to be able to reach out and that's, we can hopefully help with some of that.
And we grew fast. So it really, it was like, phew, it hit us capacity-wise. And, you know, Maybelline has done an amazing job, even with doing the work sometimes of two or three people. And this year, the new position is just really taking a lot off her plate. And we still have to really be very organized to do the things that we do, getting payments to people and being sure that they're eligible and all those things. But it's going well and we have some great kids and that's what makes it.
Nice. Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thanks.
Okay, well, Sean grabs his computer. We can move into public comments. Any public comments? No, you're, you're here for later, so we're good. So I would accept the motion to accept the consent agenda as is. Any other discussion in there?
Is this one of the superintendent's report? Can you, I have a comment about that one.
Yeah, I accept the consent.
Yeah, it is the superintendent's report is in this piece, yeah.
I don't know if we've noticed, but there's been some angel, guardian angel in Wenouski that has been donating $10,000.
$10,000, yeah.
Right?
Year. And like, you know, maybe the first year, we kind of like, okay, it's $10,000. The second, $20,000, $30,000, you know, at fourth year mark, I think we need, I mean, we know it's anonymous, but I think it'd be healthy to show a little bit of thankfulness from whatever. I don't know if the guardian angel is watching our school board meetings or if there's a way that Sean or Rebecca can just say thank you to the guardian. And can we just acknowledge that we're thankful and in some ways highlight this to the Wenouski that we have great people in this town that do unexpected things. And I just want to say thank you to that guardian angel. I'm hoping you watch this video and know that we're greatly appreciated because $40,000 is not change.
Very true.
No, and there's been some remarkable anecdotal individual and family growth from some of those dollars. And I outlined some of those anecdotes in the report that I send at the, in July every year to the donors.
I appreciate that you do that. But yeah, I just want to make sure that it is not a note that goes by, by me or at least I don't think it goes by any of us. But that's a lot of money and it does a lot of good for that community. So thank you guardian angel. I'm just gonna call you guardian angel. And we have good guardian, and thank you to the guardian angels in Wenouski.
I think part of, part of what that brings to me though is that this person could be not a citizen of Wenouski, but they are certainly a part of our community. So, you know, when you, when you define community, it can be pretty broad and we certainly appreciate it. I would accept, or all those in favor, accept the consent agenda. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. And section six now, capital project update. Remember, we had nixed section two, A2, and so we've got a capital project update.
Yeah, so I'd like to invite Rebecca Goulet and Paul Giuliani to the table if you would join us.
And we're gonna flow right into?
We're gonna flow.
Section B.
Yes.
One, two. Okay.
Strategically located.
We're gonna be taking up A1, B1, B2.
Yep.
As we go through this discussion.
So in your agenda packet, you had some backup to 6A, I, and then like Mike said, it flows into 6BI. And so I'm just gonna start, and I don't, I want to know, I guess, from you guys, how much time you want to spend on the details of this memo. But what I was gonna do in the beginning was just talk about, kind of go back and remind everybody of what's happened to this point, which is there was just a ton of work by many, many people done over the last like two-plus years to get us to the point of having great information about what our needs were, a very inclusive process to get us there, and then an energetic campaign around a bond that was passed. And since then, we've hired Tom Barton as our owner project manager. TruX Collins will be executing a contract with officially shortly, but been working with them for quite a while and they'll continue throughout the project. And then recently, REARC was approved by you all as our construction management team. So a lot of those pieces are in place. What we're here to move into the, to the phase of all the associated monies that go along with getting this thing done. So Rebecca put together that phasing in the, in your packet about phasing one, two, three, four, five and six, and then with the debt service impact, impact at the bottom there. And then finally, there's a ban recommendation. We had put out the RFP. So it was all there in writing. We are happy to walk you through it if, if that's what you, if the board feels like that's what they would like. Or we could just take questions and move forward to the action.
So definition based on, it's not understanding a lot of this stuff, but needing to. Bond anticipation note to me suggests that we went out to local banks saying we are going to get a bond in the future. We need some of these monies to be able to get this stuff started. As we, when we get the bond, we'll pay these guys back. And in the meantime, we have to pay whatever the dollars were that were listed in here based on Plan One or Two. So is that pretty much what the bond anticipation note?
This is a fairly momentous event for this board because, you know, the rubber really meets the road when you start borrowing money. And the two options presented by People's United, and I think the recommendation will be to go with the line of credit structure, which limits the interest cost of the district just to those amounts that are actually drawn on the account rather than taking the full $10 million upfront and paying interest on that until maturity. With the line of credit, the interest accrues only with respect to the draws as they take place. So that's, that's before the board tonight.
Okay. And so that particular note will get paid off a year from whenever we start it?
So we'll go out to the bond bank in the spring and those funds are usually available by July 31st. And this was due back to be paid on September 15th next year.
By honor before?
Yeah, it's plenty of, plenty of.
Plenty of time to do that.
And so you pay the interest on that, that which you pull until the date that you pay it back?
Right. And that interest cost can be capitalized. That interest cost on the short-term borrow and it couldn't be folded into the ultimate bond issue. So instead of paying as a current expense, you may want to capitalize that over the life of the bond. But that comes later. We can talk, yeah.
Depend on the cash flow and the fund balance.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So that's a big part of the first repeat. Anybody got any other questions on the bond note, the anticipation note anyway?
I was just curious, why do the other two banks not want to offer with the, like?
It's really relationships, right? We've done all of our work since I've been here with affiliated with the People's United Bank. We went out to TD Bank and they do a lot of work with the city and they just at this time, we're in a position to have the resources to work with us. And the community bank, they, they just, we don't have a relationship with them and it was a lot of money for a first-time ask. Our relationship with People's has been longstanding and really good.
Yeah. And some of the other banks probably thought that if they made a short-term loan of this size, one of the conditions would be to have the district move all its accounts to that bank. And I don't think that's anything you would be interested in. That's a very
Laborous.
tumultuous situation. The Chittenden is a very, very sound, capable bank. The people there are extremely capable, courteous. They're, you pick up the phone, you get an answer. And that's not my job to make a recommendation, but my experience with them has been very, very positive.
For the uninitiated, you mentioned a Chittenden, but that was a few years back.
Yes.
Did I say Chittenden?
You did. Right along with it.
Good, good. I still call it the Grand Union too.
It's a supermarket.
They haven't changed. They just folded. Different issue. Okay.
So Paul has worked on drawing up the legal papers for, for the bond anticipation note that would need to be signed once the vote is, if the vote is passed in favor by the entire board and then Robert would sign that and be delivered to the bank and the funds would be available starting next week. And we will only draw down, we have to draw down at $50,000 at a time, which is, is there actually a pretty good number because the first couple of months will probably be right around that? So we'll kind of just pull it as we need it and just we're not taking out too much and paying interest on it.
And what, can you just talk a little bit about what are those expenses that will be covered by this between, you know, now and when we actually go into the bond itself?
Sure. So over the summer, if you've seen some of the communication stuff that's been sent out, we've worked with some subcontractors doing like the geo drilling to find out how the ground soil is. We're starting to do some asbestos testing. We have some surveys out here going to see what the borderlines are. So all those expenses that we paid this summer, we paid out of a clearing account which will be reimbursed by this bond and put back into the capital projects. And going forward, we'll have additional subcontractors. And as we go through this, if we need any abatement done in the building before the contractor takes over, it'll pay for the TruX Collins bills. It'll pay for Tom Barton services and it'll also pay REARC as they go through the pre-construction. Pays for our legal as well and it kind of just goes down that path.
Permits.
Permits.
Site work that needs to be done.
Exactly.
Remind the board that on April 3rd of this year, you adopted a declaration of official intent. So you can look back 60 days from April 3rd of this year and all these costs that Rebecca's referring to are eligible for reimbursement within that period. So that's April, March into February or something. So there, in other words, those, those costs can be reimbursed and recovered out of the proceeds of these tax, this tax exempt borrowing. So.
So we paid for a lot of the work with TruX Collins out of the reserve account. So we could, you know, potentially reimburse the reserve account for some of those expenses that we took on last year for that. And that's something we can have a discussion on at a later date. But we are eligible to do that.
Can, I'm looking at the People's document now. And there's a section two in there. Can you help me with that?
I'm what the.
Because the two options that they had for the, the note were either, you know, take it all at once, pay a 2.1% interest rate, pay 2.35 in 5K, but only pay the interest on that which you draw down at a minimum of $50,000. What is section two in there telling me?
It's right here. It's about the, the investment rate should be taking the full $10 million.
You could, if you took the full $10 million upfront, lump sum and paid 2, 2.1% interest on that, the bank says you could invest it at the bank at 1.65%, which means it's negative arbitrage. You're losing money. So there's really not.
What an offer.
Much inducement.
Say that again.
Okay.
I feel like you just took something out of my pocket just telling me.
The district borrows $10 million under option one. The interest rate on that lump sum borrowing is 2.10%.
Right.
If you took the 2.10%, the bank says we'll offer you an investment vehicle in the bank that pays a return to the district of 1.65%. Now, the district also has the option of going out and trying to find a higher yield someplace, but you're gonna have to pay somebody to do that. And that's pretty heavy stuff. So the point is that some, years ago, you could borrow. So, the point is that some, years ago, you could borrow at a low tax-exempt rate, invest at a higher rate, and that difference is called arbitrage, it was a net income to the district. But those days are long gone, the interest rates that are today. So, you know, you cut your losses, I'm not gonna say cut your losses. You minimize your expense by just paying interest on what you're needing.
I didn't associate that section with re, with putting that money back into an account at the bank. Okay, thank you. You did, just by explaining it, you did take something out of my pocket, so.
Oh, yes.
Thank you for that. All right.
I think half my problems are just my iPad.
So, let's see. Any other updates on the, on the project itself, in general?
No, I mean, the only other one would be that we had kind of the big kickoff organizational meeting yesterday with WSD folks, TruX Collins, REARC, and Tom Barton, and he ran the show. So that was really to get some shared assumptions around communication procedures, around documentation keeping, and all that kind of stuff, and then send people off into these different groups.
So, was I supposed to be there?
No, no. We kept you guys out of it because it had to be during the day, and all, we talked about schedule, and we know when we wanna schedule the executive team meetings, which you will be a part of, so.
Can I make a suggestion in that regard? You know, this is gonna be a really big deal, big project. You better be sure that on the district side and the contractor's side, there's one person talking to one person. You can't have communications going to everybody, it's just gonna fall apart, so.
Yep, Tom Barton is the one who is, yep. He's, as he said yesterday, "I wanna be CC'd on everything."
Everything, yeah.
Yep.
And then just going forward, the next couple of weeks, we're gonna do a little more design work. Like, next week, we have a couple of meetings scheduled with the specialists coming in, consultants like the food service and the lighting and the performing arts center, and trying to wrap up our schematic design stuff.
We've made a lot of progress on the middle school pod options, which we were, have spent a lot of time on, and figuring out how to try to make everybody happy with the classroom configurations, the support service configuration. So, you know, the next two months, there's still gonna be a lot of that with Cam and David coming into the school and meeting with, with us and teacher groups, and looking at designs, making revisions, bringing them back and forth.
I don't know who can take us, or at least me, through the debt service section. Ultimately, to put it all together, to understand at the end of time, what are we adding to the budget on an annual basis to pay the bonds off?
Approximately $3.7 million per year, once we get it all in place.
So that 3.7 will be added, and that will be just each year, that quantity will be in there?
Well, maybe not, because you're gonna have an interest cost on this 10 million dollars, I forget what it is, if you looked at it. And that's gonna be built into next year's budget.
260,000.
So, you do that over a year or two, you, it's a lot of money, don't get me wrong, but you tend to dampen that rate shock. In other words, 3.7 million dollar increase in one year, that's a lot of money.
Right.
But if you start in year one, it's X, year two it's Y, and by the time you get to the end, maybe three years out, nobody's gonna be happy about paying more in taxes, but at least the shock will be dampened a little bit.
Okay, 'cause I'm sensing that this, we're gonna get almost three, two-thirds of this entire bond next year, in next year's.
Not necessarily. It's really gonna depend on how the project goes and what, we can decide to be in different borrowing things. So we may, you know, figure out, come May, when we have to put the application into the bond bank, we'll kind of have a feel for what's gonna happen that summer, we need to pay off the bond, and we'll come up with a number. Right now, I'm saying 34 million, just based on the schedule that I've seen. Could be more, could be less, depending how far we get. We could also then take out another line of credit to get us through and put off that borrowing another year.
So just to clarify, the 34 you're talking about is the biggest chunk of borrowing, and that would be for FY '22?
Twenty-two.
Right, that would be the 10 million plus the 24 for the next.
And that's about the interest when we take it out. I've worked with Michael at the bond bank, and we're thinking it's about $750,000 onto the budget next year for the interest.
The interest was included when we thought about the total number for the bond?
No, interest is on top of the principal amount of the bond.
Okay.
That's just principal.
But the pay, right, but the payback of the 3.7 that we're talking about, that includes paying down the principal and the interest associated with it.
So the whole part about phasing, you know, is trying to be respectful to the budget and the taxpayers, and only taking money, asking for money when we absolutely need it, so that we can, you know, kind of ramp this up a little bit and show that we are being fiscally responsible. The other thing with this we have to keep in mind is that we are trying, we're getting a foundation put together with Emily, however the new development communications person. So we're hoping that we'll get some grants or some fundraising to offset this, so maybe we don't borrow the whole amount either, and that, that money may come into play in a later round. We just don't know what that holds right now, so when I put this phasing plan together, I am assuming that we are borrowing the total, the total amount. We're not obligated to do that, and we don't have to make that decision at this point. We just need to have a cash flow to keep us going through the project, and we can talk again in the spring, and maybe we decide, you know, we only wanna pay off the bond and get 24 million, and then midway through the year, ask for another band. So there's, there's a lot of ways to do it. We're just not, we don't have enough information to make all those decisions right now, so we have to make some assumptions.
Well, it seems like it's in the taxpayers' interest to keep the options open.
Oh, yeah.
To really, see what makes sense.
Don't paint yourself in a, oh, no.
Exactly. Yeah.
So from Emily's standpoint, for the money that gets raised through the development piece, it seems like that would be far better to not borrow upfront, put that money back into the checking account and not have to take the money out on the bond. As we get done with all the borrowing, then that just gets, anything that the development director does, you pay right off the top.
Those types of grants or requests or whatever, they can be used to fund a debt service account to
Depending on?
Pay down the bond as it comes due. In other words, you don't have to spend it necessarily on a capital item, you could put it into a debt service, a sinking fund that's used to pay debt services. That would tend to dampen the tax rate a little bit, too, but, I mean, that's so speculative right now.
It would kind of be like a fund balance for debt service.
And I also wanna add, not to put all the pressure on Emily, but there are other things that we can do in terms of the advocacy, in terms of the capital bill that's coming in. If we can get 30% of that, that's 30% less from foundation. And rumor has it that one of our superintendents co-chairing that committee, so that we can get that, you know, and I think
No pressure.
No pressure at all, you know, that superintendent. But that's also the other thing of how we can engage the community to help us, like, writing letters to the state, you know, like, that's the stuff that we should as a board to really help energize the community to feel every bit of part of this, so it is not on just Emily and this. I think you presented essentially the best worst-case scenario.
I think we have to right now, right?
Right, and I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
But this also motivates us as a board to figure out, what are other levers so that we can help reduce it that isn't just borrowing money.
And there's time on the retreat agenda this weekend where Emily's gonna come, and she's gonna talk to you about that whole development plan and the support that we need from all of you in regards to that. And then certainly, when the money starts rolling in, we will be coming back to you with some financial expertise from Rebecca and probably Paul and maybe others to give you advice about how to apply that in the most strategic way for both taxpayers and the organization.
All right.
Glad to help.
And Paul, from your perspective then, what haven't we asked that we need to know?
Vintage mic.
Paul and I have spent a lot of time talking about this.
You know, you folks have done your homework. I mean, that's, that's obvious to me.
Good news.
We're gonna ask you, we're gonna ask you to make that as a quote in any of our future communication to the community, because that's a
You may ascribe those remarks to me. This is so refreshing, not being presented with a shoebox, if you get my drift. This is really very refreshing. And, I mean, I think you've studied this and peeled the onion, and you've gotten to the point where I think the question is now, do we pull the trigger? Do we go forward with this temporary, excuse me, temporary financing? And if so, somebody makes a motion, and off we go. That's, that's your decision, not mine.
Yeah, no, that piece I got. That piece I got. I'm just wondering, I just wanna make sure that there's nothing left
Jeez, I don't, I don't
Under the covers that hasn't been shaken for
I don't, I don't see it, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm very, very comfortable with, at least where I am, so.
All right, good. You can call me Fred. It's Mike. It's Mike, okay. Sorry. Okay, any other questions? Anything, anything we missed? All right, so.
The motion would be to accept option two from the proposal from People's United Bank to
And to approve the documentation that's been presented.
Ban agreement.
Yeah. Don't go through this piece by piece, just blanket.
So, I would accept a motion to move forward with the bond anticipation note as described in option two.
Yep.
And the People's United recom, options.
Yeah, what you said.
Cover everything I needed?
I think so, yeah.
Any other dis, go ahead.
The motion to accept, to go forward with the bond
Anticipation note as described in option two with
In, in People's United
With
United Bank.
Thanks.
People's United.
And, and approve the documentation that's before the board.
Borrowing options.
The borrowing documentation.
Approve the loan documentation.
That's before the board, yeah.
The what?
Ban.
Ban.
B A N.
Anticipation note documentation.
No. Okay.
Sign.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I'll probably put Sean in there.
Why not? Yeah, that's all words.
All those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Alex.
Alex. He actually really didn't. He actually said, "Let's do it."
So, with that, or can we take the time to sign these documents before we move on, or?
While they're going on another
Yeah.
Who needs to sign them that's here right now?
So the entire board, and Alex needs to sign as a district clerk as well.
Okay.
And then Robert will sign tomorrow as the district treasurer, so there's two places for everybody to sign and can pass around.
Yep.
Okay.
And the treasurer's side.
The treasurer will be here tomorrow.
Okay.
But what about, and this one here, too?
Capital project update and the bond anticipation note, and we'll be down to the checking accounts. What's that? It's a pencil, though.
Did I tell you?
Sorry, I mean, put an eye out or something, throwing pencils around the table, sorry. I'll be better. I won't be good, but I'll be better.
You get back from the trip.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate it. I need that.
So, please? Three, okay.
All right, and we'll follow Tori's lead as we move along here. So next item up then is checking account for scholarships and the ban. I'm gonna take those up individually, so we can just describe the scholarship piece and
We had them on the agenda together. You can certainly split them if you wanted. We had them as a single motion.
Right, just to describe the need for each, if we would.
Right, so in the, in the backup that you had, there was a memo from Rebecca that described the scholarships is that Wenuski Dollars for Scholars is disbanding due to primarily a lack of participation by parents and community members who had run it for many, many years. And so, we worked with them to have a thoughtful transition about this, because we don't want the scholarships to go away, and schools can oversee and manage the scholarships. We have a school-level committee, Karen Green and some high school teachers, and they're the ones who, who really oversee the scholarships themselves and make sure that selections are done properly and monies are dispersed and all of that good stuff. So we're asking for a checking account, so that Dollars for Scholars can transfer their remaining balance. The one missing link in this program is that we have to figure out a way to continue the fundraising side of it, because there was one or two pretty significant fundraisers per year that kept the scholarship balance living, like Calcutta. So we're still working on that to have a plan, but we, it was very clear, it's been going on for a few years, that Dollars for Scholars was, was not in a position to continue doing this. So that's the, the first piece. And then the second one is just for the ban. So we need a, we need another account to run the monies in and out of.
And that way, all activity for both of those functions go through their own accounts and their individual, they don't get tied into anything else.
Right, yeah, both separate and both with People's.
Okay, as the rest of our accounts are, okay.
Yep.
I would accept a motion to approve the checking accounts for scholarships and the ban.
So move.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Hi?
Hi.
Opposed? Okay. I would like to add one small item to that piece, and I'm not gonna name any names, I'm just gonna put it out at a high level. That is, there has been an individual working with the Dollars for Scholars now for, I believe it's over 14 years, if I'm not mistaken, somewhere along those lines, and has not had a student in the school for over 10. She's been very much involved. We haven't talked often about the golden apple, which is probably okay, because you don't do it unless you have a real reason. I would like to recommend that we take the step and reward, or acknowledge this individual's time, effort on behalf of our students over the past lots of years, so.
Sounds wonderful.
Okay, we'll get that lined up, and hopefully we can do it here in October. We'll do it up, we'll do it upfront in a meeting, but I think that's one of the places you wanna use those. All right. And then, so we're down into the transportation, and this, Sean had one adjustment to the, to the transportation piece. So Sean, if you wanna just detail what the change was first, and we can take up the rest of it.
Yeah, it's interesting. I think she may have updated it if you're in the shared folder, actually.
Seventy-one to, seventy-five to eighty-one days?
Yeah, you have ten days.
Right, so in the agreement itself, the original one you got said that the term was December 2nd until March 27th, and then the memo that Rebecca had put together was also based on that originally, I think, 71 days, and we increased it to 10. So, the
By 10.
By 10, by 10 days, sorry. So what that means is the term in the agreement will change from December 2nd to April 10th. So we're picking up an extra 10 days for students to be transported. And the way that we're able to do that is within the budget is, because we're seeing an increasing amount of revenue that's coming from the state. You start to get revenue after two years of providing transportation, so we can afford a little bit more.
That's brilliant.
Fantastic.
Oh, nice.
And as you see, the rate, the daily rate stayed the same, as you see in the memo for, you know, 9.50 a day for the two buses.
Two buses.
Two runs for each bus.
Two buses, two runs in the morning.
Yep.
Do we have a sense of the numbers of riders?
Yes, we were
Well over 125.
Yeah, between, between the four, yeah, we were averaging around 120. Yeah.
Is there still a project that, I remember when this project came out, we were talking about assessment of the data and all that. Is there still a project that, I remember when this project came out, we were talking about assessment of the data and all that. Is there any chance for, you know, because in, in theory, for due diligence, we were trying to also figure out like, what's the impact of having the bus?
Yeah.
On attendance, on, pretty much on attendance, that was kind of our.
Yeah, coming.
Yes, so, s- some of the data, as we looked at it, it doesn't necessarily support.
Right.
Because this is in the winter, what we found when we looked into it more deeply is winter sicknesses. There tends to be kids out of school more frequently during particularly January and February. And so depending on the year and how bad it is, we've seen that fluctuate a little bit. So there isn't a great data set that says, wow, this is really improving attendance right now.
That was an issue.
Yeah.
From the first year that the bus program, but I don't know what happened in the second year and it was just a curiosity and also it would be great to also, if we did have the data, just share it with the parents for youth for change because they've been.
I have shared it with them.
But it's one of those things where like, you know, and I'm not saying it's on the district, but there are a lot of people that are excited and going to do the assessment and then.
What happened to it? Right. Right. The other part that's, that I, that we found tricky with the data is, you know, we have all of the attendance, but it's overall attendance for all students. We're not tracking each individual student that's getting on the bus. We're tracking how many, but not their names. So we can't necessarily tie that back in a really clear way. And, and I think you run into all kinds of privacy issues if you.
The real test here, I think, is got to be weather dependent, right? You, you, it's going to end up being weather dependent and it's going to be just number of kids is out, not the number of kids that ride. Right? It, it's, we get a snowstorm, we end up, and now you've got three years' worth of data. You'd have to go back to four years ago because now you've got the bus in place, kids are coming.
Right.
So you don't know how to. Take that out.
In one way for me, and just to point this out, is that I noticed in the agreement that you took out the notion that you needed to have a parent on the bus.
A bus aide, right.
A bus aide.
Yeah.
And, and, and I'm going to be curious about how that goes in this upcoming year. Will the bus drivers still talk about the?
For reference, last year they were very often not being able to pass a ride the bus. And we were at that meeting at the end of the year and the bus drivers, you know, ha, didn't have issues with our students. They were very thankful for the ride, so we're hopeful that that'll continue.
Okay.
And I would want to add, but like, there's something amazing when the bus dri, a- and, and once again, that's a positive element of a data point that is not necessarily always in, in, in apples and oranges, right? Quantitative, but the fact that our bus drivers are saying that they're well behaved on that bus says a lot to me. And I want, I don't know how we capture that and kind of communicate about the, this type of behavior because I do think, a, and this is just reading front porch forum, when I have parents talking about misbehaving children at the O'Brien Center in that truck, that image is not my image when I rode the bus.
Sure.
And, and, and it drives a different perspective of who's being taught in here.
And I want that perspective truly not to be, you know, if it's not true, we need to cut it.
Yep.
Is Jeff coming back this year in Spangle? He was one of the bus drivers last year, if I remember.
Oh, yeah, I don't know.
I was just thinking, an interview with a newsletter, we could have one of the students interview him and have, have that perspective because he would, he would give it to you.
It's actually real interesting, the bus drivers kind of like jockeying for this issue to get that route.
They really like it.
So we should jockey self-berling to give us a discount.
They did that year, stay there.
I know. And I do appreciate that we're doing ten days out.
Yeah.
At some point, though, should we be considering to like, use some of those extra days on the backend?
Yeah, the reason we went with the, with the way we did is that we didn't want to start it before the Thanksgiving break because I think it gets confusing.
Yeah.
So we wanted to start it at natural breaks in the calendar and we, and so we felt that putting them on the end was better. And we can certainly, you know.
And I apologize, not at the end, I meant more on like, you know, we, we, we pick them up, but we actually don't send them home.
And South Burlington wouldn't probably be able to, to do that with us because they use those buses for co-curricular in the afternoon.
Okay.
So that's one of the reasons we haven't explored that.
In my mind, the plan is to continue to expand the delivery, so to speak, to school. And when we get to that full time over the course of a number of years, and now we've got the revenue side moving, we've got a, you know, relationship with, with South Burlington and I think a decent rate, we can continue to grow that each year. Then we start to build upon, if needed, the, the second part.
And, and just for like, those of the city taxpayers who like, do watch this video, I do want to remind us that like, this continued relation building has been great in terms of the cost because the initial cost for the bus program was outrageous. And this says a lot that South Burlington is willing to continue that really, and that's another data point.
Yeah, it shouldn't be a profit enterprise. It shouldn't be a profitable experience, so.
I think the first year was they had to buy the bus to make this work.
Right.
Loss on that, which I understand, so I think we're in a good place now.
But it was crazy to hear of the proposals before South Burlington, if I remember correctly. Those prices were outrageous.
Well, there's still a lot of shortages of bus drivers and you see it on the news at least weekly, and that's where the price gets driven up by.
Well, back to the regional collaboration, right? I mean, Champlain Valley has owns like, I think, fifty or sixty of their own buses. South Burlington owns a bunch of their own buses, Mount Mansfield owns a bunch of their own. So one of the first things that came up in, in our regional superintendent's group when we started talking about it yesterday at our first meeting was transportation was the number one. Like, why don't we create a regional, you know, transportation? We have issues, right, with getting kids back and forth to tech centers and, you know, who's, where do they stop? Community-based learning opportunities, having kids be able, high school kids go between schools, special ed programs. We could transport students more efficiently instead of paying for taxis and all that. You know, so I think that is a really high leverage regional collaboration possibility.
Bus and bus capacity in the area, okay.
Man, I don't want to take the time now, but at some point, I, I, this bus, bussing situation is very confusing to me. And how, you know, what the school district provides, why there's the necessity for entities external to the school district to provide bus services for students. I don't, I don't understand any of this.
Yeah, from a, we can certainly take it up. I think from a high level, the issue was getting kids to school during the winter that have to walk a long way.
Exact, okay.
We don't have buses, and when we went out to Mountain Transit, the, the bid that we got back was prohibitively expensive because I don't think they just wanted to do it. And so we went to South Burlington because, uh, within the conversations, they were able to free up some capacity to be able to help us do that transit.
Okay, so does that mean that we will now be able to take care of our students that are served by external entities? That's the question.
Like taxis and?
Doesn't Parents and Youth for Change run a bus service for our students?
No. This is what this is, they're part of that partnership.
Yeah, they were, they were the ones that drove to help.
They advocated for the, we worked with them to bring this service.
It, it kind of came out of a, a Parents for, Parents for Change, and this was when they began canvassing, trying to look at leadership among parents. This was the one issue that most parents agreed with. So they helped them do the research and doing advocacy, and we looked, there were so many other options, trying to look at CC, like, well, now it's Green Mountain Transit, to see if they could do it, other buses going, could, could that help? And it ended up that there was no other way to do what parents were saying was one of the most important issues to them at that time, to do it other than hiring buses. So we did a pilot project to see how it would.
Would kids ride?
Right, and so that was in 2017 that we did it. Based on the advocacy of a parent group.
So they got, they got the motion, they got the, the whole ball, law.
Rolling on this.
The rest of it then got put in place.
So I want to, I want to clarify that because I want to understand what you're asking for, Margaret, because I think what I was hearing was something more of like, understanding all of the transportation that we provide and who we pay to do that because we do it, it's not just with one provider. And there are different transportation needs, you know, special, special needs, athletics, field trips, pre-K, and then this general winter transportation that we do.
Yes, I would like to understand that, but I also would like to understand a system that has, and this is what I know, which is, I don't really know. But I, I have always questioned why an, an agency, an entity external to the school district, whether it's us or South Burlington, provide services in winter for our children.
And they don't.
Okay, well, that's.
And they don't, right.
Does every, does everybody know that or is everybody, I didn't know that. I mean, that has been.
You're talking specifically Parents and Youth for Change providing service. They don't provide the service. They, they provided the push.
They're community organizers, so they were, they were working with parents to find out what their needs were and then help them convey them to the school district and the school board.
They used to do like a car, they organized a carpool for a while during the, the initial stages. Is that what you're referring to? With a van, maybe, did they have?
The one thing they do do, Margaret, is they, they would, when they're available, they would ride the bus and be the bus aide.
Or they would be the ones at the bus stop counting. But they weren't providing the financial support for the program the district is.
Nor the coordination, nor the buses, nor the drivers, nor the funding to do it.
So we, we have no arrangement with them to be with the kids at the OCC before they board the bus.
Not anymore.
That came out of this latest contract because they couldn't put enough people on there to do it on a regular basis, so it took their requirement out. Because they couldn't, they couldn't fulfill those slots to fulfill that requirement that we had put on originally.
They, they, Parents and Youth for Change would like to raise money so that they could pay people to be at the bus stops. Because they have had the last few years, and we've done this, they've organized volunteers to be there.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Who've done a wonderful job, but it's a fragile system. You know, it requires recruitment of volunteers, different set of volunteers almost every year.
Or monthly, depending on how they, how they operate.
Yeah, I mean, there were some wonderful people, Valerie, who was down there and coloring books in the OCC for the kids in the morning and crafts and different things, and it was reading and it was fantastic. But, but Parents and Youth for Change have been really helpful in that way.
I, I think the disconnect for me is not being, not understanding why it is not our responsibility to provide, fund, whatever our children getting to, to school.
It is our responsibility and we do provide that function, the service and the dollars. Nothing comes from Parents for Youth for Change, except for the supervision on the buses in the past years.
What I'm hearing you ask, I, I, how I would answer it is statutorily, school districts are not required to provide transportation to and from school.
Okay. Okay, yep.
And if you look at our transportation policy, it basically leaves it up to the board to decide what kind of transportation they will provide, but they're not required to provide any. Yeah.
Got it, thank you.
Okay.
Good clarification.
All right, so the contract with South Burlington, any questions? Saw the details in the, in the contract itself, so we have to approve.
Just that you're, you're making a motion to authorize me to sign the contract on your behalf. It's a, and it's a district-to-district agreement, which is allowable by statute.
So I'd accept a motion to allow Sean to enter into this agreement and sign it with South Burlington for the bussing. So moved to students as defined. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Okay. All right, and then Superintendent Monitoring Report. This one being. Financial conditions, whoo, sorry. All right, any changes?
So the changes are, I, in, in one, in the evidence, I, instead of listing every single year, basically since I've been here with the audits, I took a year off, so it wasn't as lengthy because we had kind of talked about five years previously in another monitoring report.
Okay.
So as we add a year, I'll take one off now that we're up to having a five. And then the only other one was in six, in the last evidence around internal controls, we had in the, in the one, in the previous audit relative to the preschool expansion grant, we had had some language in there. I took it out because it was in the last one, and we've had an audit since then.
Yes.
And so, I, and that, that was just my interpretation of how that kind of thing would be done, so I wanted to.
Carry the, yeah, we will not carry those forward, like, we won't carry compliance forward either.
Right.
It's, once it's been corrected, it's good to go.
Yep, and then the only other was one, was in fourteen. The Procedure 305 on tuition and waiver of tuition, which will be a policy discussion next month for you. I revised the procedures over the summer to, and my belief is that it reduces exposure for the organization around accepting students of district employees at no cost. And so I, I noted that in the evidence for number fourteen.
And we'll, we'll take that one up in October because there are other issues that we need to make some.
Yeah, there's a legal recommendation that the board have a policy around that, opposed to having it just be in procedure.
All right. So anything? Any comments and thoughts? Any, any issues?
Very thorough.
Okay, and again.
And I remembered to put the attachment of the finance manager. Thank you, it only took me six years. And so Rebecca updated that, particularly, you know, the, the bottom part in the, in terms of the expenses from capital reserve and so forth. The other, the top part, top part of bullets stayed the same.
All right. All right, any other discussion? I would expect, I would expect, I would accept, not expect, accept a motion to accept policy Monitoring Report 2.3 on financial conditions.
So moved.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Opposed?
Thanks, Rebecca.
Thank you, Rebecca. All right, so down into seven here. Plan, plan a meeting with the legislators. This is for, I want to get, in, in October. And we did last year, we tried to do it in February, everybody was busy. Everybody said, I'd like to come, but I can't make it because I'm busy. So moved it in the annual agenda to October. What I'd like to do right now is, and I'll get a list of, we'll work up the list with Sean of the, the local folks that we want. What I would like to do, though, is send them a few at least feeder topics of what we're going to talk about, so when they do come, they'll have some kind of a, a starting point rather than a cold turkey start. So I think, I think school construction issues and I think that's a, a top, a top item.
Early childhood.
And, and what with regards to the early childhood specifically did we want to?
What's the path forward to be able to provide livable wages for early childhood providers?
Sean, you articulated that issue so well earlier today, maybe help form that question again.
Okay.
Yeah. So are they not, we're talking about licensed professionals? Why, are they not on the same, if, if there's a teacher salary scale? I do, because I just looked up UVM to see if you could be certified in early childhood, yes. So why would there be any discrepancy? So why would there be any discrepancy in what early childhood educators are paid and other teachers are paid?
I think, I think it comes down to where you do the work. If you do it in the school, you get paid on the school district's salary schedule, but if you do it in a private institution, you're working on their-
Twenty-eight partners, exactly.
Part, uh, a big part of it is financial. For a school district to be able to afford to hire, let's say, all the preschool classroom teachers that we would need to staff here, um, would far outweigh what we get through the funding formula. So you get the three thousand bucks, plus you get like, uh, half in ADM, point four six for a preschool student. So in essence, you're getting like, eight thou- seven or eight thousand bucks. So that's not gonna cover it. So that, that is one of the reasons that initially, when we got into this, we went with Head Start because it was more cost efficient for us to do that and provide the service. And particularly, um, to, um, families that were really in need of it. So, I, to me, that's the, that's one of the biggest hurdles. You know, if, if we can figure out a way within the funding formula to legitimize preschoolers, like we do kindergartners through twelfth graders, and provide the dollars, you know, um, some districts might argue with you about it being, um, that they want to take that on. We're positioned, uh, really well to do it.
And need to, yes, yeah, it's critical, I think, in this district.
I think the other topic, oh, go ahead. Well, I had special ed funding and formula and where we're going, that's one seventy-three.
One seventy-three, and related to that would be waiting. So there's a waiting study going on right now that, um... That, uh, Robin and I both spoke to the professor at UVM that's doing the study, and the report should be out the end of October.
Is it Tammy Colby?
Yeah, yep. And, um, one of the things that, that we were really advocating for in the waiting was, uh, more than the, the point two, I think it is, for ELL students. Because when we do the financial al- analysis, uh, what we, what we need and what we spend far outweighs that waiting that we get. And the small amount of like, um, uh, refugee, uh, grant that comes, it's like forty thousand or something. So that was, and I think for us, because we have a, a high concentration, and Burlington and Winewski have a really high percentage of, you know, that increase in that waiting, I think, would help us a lot, and it's more reasonable at a state level because it's not as many kids as if you're gonna increase the, the, uh, free and reduced lunch waiting, uh, so.
Alex, you had a?
Mine is basically for our budget planning, why they can't give us the numbers sooner, and like, why we're always playing that game. Is yours a common theme?
Nope, but we, I remember we're having talked about that, um, before, so thank you.
Yeah.
Why are you writing that down? Do we need to know anything more about the new healthcare, um... Budget and, yeah, the insurance and how that's gonna affect us in the coming years?
Yeah, question. Yeah, I should give you guys an update on that, too.
That was, sorry, I was-
Statewide, right, so the healthcare, uh, insurance?
Hopefully, somebody in that group has some kind of an update on that, right? I would think.
Yeah, and V S B A has been putting one out every couple of months.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, great.
All right, I think that's enough, um, seed questions to, to get things in here, and we'll, we'll go with, we'll let the, the conversation flow for the hour, um, otherwise, so we'll try to cut the rest of the schedule down to, to meet. All right, um, we then had an item in here, um, community engagement. And I, uh, Margaret, I had told you that I thought we were talking about this Saturday, but it's in here for a specific reason, and that partly was, um, our discussion on, uh, needing a lot of that coming forward as we move forward here, and trying to get out into the community, and I think, um, was it you two that had the, um, community interaction? Because we talked about having Val come to, um, our retreat on, on Saturday. But decided that it might be easier to have, maybe, you two guys get with Val to try to understand what might be some next steps.
Okay.
Um, and we can, you know, we've got the, we've got the funds to pay whatever time that we need to for her, uh, engagement. I, I think part of this, if I remember Sean with our, our discussions, part of this conversation was making sure that we get enough of the voice out into the community to, um, understand that we're getting people to the table for the, you know, the, we're gonna, I, I think we've got probably the biggest budget vote we've had, most critical, let me put it that way, since I've been on the board anyway, um, to, to get through. We just need to get out into the community and make sure that people are aware of what it is, and it's not a surprise or a shock. If we need to go out and do one of these meetings out somewhere, or can, or a regular agenda, and bring folks in here, more than happy to do that.
Well, it'd be great to sort of piggyback off of her, um, presentation to us and our conversation at our last board meeting about community engagement, how the, that work would happen here. And what I'm curious about, which would be helpful to talk to her about, is, so how do we get started on that?
Yes.
You know, what is, where do we go?
Right.
To get there?
Well...
From vision to practice.
I think that we can, you know, those of us who are interested can see that kind of community engagement and outreach in operation on September fifteenth. Because the announcement has gone out, Parents and Youth for Change, of a community dinner and meeting at the OCC.
Okay.
Right, and there are issues, certainly, that, some of which we've talked about, you know. The issues that matter to the community are on that agenda, transportation is one of those issues. And I'm suspecting that's gonna be a, a fairly full house. So I think it would, I think it's important, the, the approach, you know, the materials that go out to the community, the kinds of, to have some sense of the agenda items that are important to bring out members of the community, engage them. I think, you know, they have been, that organization has been very successful.
In getting people to come out.
In getting people to come out.
That's good.
Right.
Okay.
Put it on the agenda, but getting them to come out is key.
And that is when? September fifteenth?
September fifteenth.
Okay.
What time?
I look for the, I think it's five, I had the, I'll get the flyer, I have the flyer, but I can't find it, I must have, but, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, can you include me in that, too, because I haven't gotten a notification about that.
Speaking of community engagement, what happened to our student reps?
Yeah, oh, sorry, I, I should have done that upfront, I apologize, they had, uh, conflicts, soccer.
Soccer games.
Both of them?
Yep, yep.
So...
Well, I hope they're having a successful soccer game.
Yeah.
How'd it go last night for the boys?
I don't know.
Okay, okay.
Do you mean this soccer is gonna be an issue for the rest of the summer?
So I, uh, so just as a reminder, Sophia Doe is, is the senior rep, and Hiba LaRusi is the UMET, UMET pope. Hiba, the new rep in the, in the spring. Um, and I, so, Sophia is in early college.
Right.
Yep, so she's not really on campus very frequently, except right now during the, the fall season for soccer. And Hiba goes to Tech for a half-day program at, uh, Essex, and then she comes back in the afternoon. So, um, there has been a little bit of communication challenges, and so I have a meeting with both of them, uh, and I'm pulling, uh, uh, new co-principal Jean Berthium into it, so that we can, we can really, uh, express to them what, uh, what the expectations, again, are, and also uh, that we want this, uh, we want their ideas on how to make this more meaningful for them, too.
Good.
Right.
Is there a reason not to have backup to them?
Continuity, for the most part.
I get the continuity, but like, I, I've noticed if we were to count the number of student reps and how many, and, and I get some of it was weather-related last year. But, you know, we probably had really two or three good meetings that they actually felt comfortable talking, and that were here. And it's hard for me to say that we're community engaged, you know, if we don't, and maybe one of the things, I, and, and I was thinking about the community engagement and going into the community. I would love it if we took a time and actually did a school board meeting during school for the senior class, or whatever, the high school class. Just to show them what governance is and how they can have a part of this. It may mean like us, some of us who have to work just making the day, but again, that to me would be one level of like engaging with the students and giving that, and, and thus really seriously giving some time for students to come talk. Obviously, we'll work on the prep work, on like, how to organize it so that students can feel comfortable talking, let them learn what... And I think it'd be a great civic engagement type of activity.
And I would suggest, um, one of the things that Jean Berthium brought up when we were talking about this, because he has experience with it from Harwood, was there needs to be some board development around how you incorporate students into these meetings, you know, and some help with that because it's not always easy to incorporate them into some of these agenda items, you know, and so, you know, there's people like Helen Be- Beatty and some others who do a really good job, um, working on helping adults work with students around student voice.
And, and I know that we have professional development set aside for that, and I, I agree that if, that's something that we are really serious about, that we use some of that money to invest in that development of our students.
We, and us.
And us, right.
I think, I think part of it is us being able to be, part of it is us being able to reach out and, and formulate questions that draw the input that we need or want, right, so. Okay, so, it, I, I think I would like to say, at least from the community engagement piece, if you guys can reach out to Val, uh, I would like to try to organize one meeting that is a community-based meeting with, uh, agenda topics that we can, that are not necessarily policy-related, but the commu- I would like to have that discussion with community members like we had with the, um, schools and the, um, employers from the area. Just a roundtable discussion, it doesn't have to, to see if we can figure out how to, how to get to that point and be meaningful about it.
Okay.
And it doesn't have to be, obviously, in the next three or four months, but sometime before the end of the school year might be nice to be able to, to do that.
Yeah.
I was thinking February, but I'm not sure, Sean, you had some input on that, right? February, to be able to get the voice out, get the communication out for the vote, and, but, I don't know how that, I don't know how that lines up.
Okay.
All right. Yep, so district newsletter topics, I got, uh, I got this month's, um, and then, Margaret, I think we decided you, you have the next one, right? Um, so, I'm gonna go with something a little bit different, the capital project from a pretty high level, but I want to get into, um, change, um, based measurements as opposed to state, uh, SBACK score measurements and making sure that our kids are coming along, and that we know which ones need the extra supports, which ones, you know, where they are, that they make a year of improvement, but if they're off-grade level, you can get the support. But I want to get that discussion started to get some of the discussion of the standardized test scores out of the, uh, at least, not necessarily in a background, but to, to be known that there's something else other than that that we're looking at. So, I don't know where that'll go, but we'll see, we'll see. Any other, any thoughts? Margaret, do you have a topic in mind, or you, no, do we have something that we might want to toss out to noodle over?
So, a lesson learned from our city and, um, school joint board meeting. I did end up meeting with a citizen that expressed concern, and I think for me, and what I got, and you can tell from my writings about unity and strength and all that in the last article, one of the things that I'm tired of is that certain groups of people only inviting a certain voice to diversity initiatives, and not truly challenging themselves to hear voices that may be opposed to what are the general course. I think Margaret and I actually had discussions about this, Val. I really only did the diversity, like, council because I needed to be a role model for the students of color that were there, and to show them that there were people of color to do it, but like, the lessons learned was like, less, you know, you're singing to the choir, I want you to bring, I want you to bring people who are gonna challenge us and make, and bring them in in educating, because I'm also tired of educating white folks that are left because someone started something and then didn't want to do the grunt work. And I'm tired of like, white people also saying that it's not my job, and going like, but then who's gonna do it, and then you leave those people festering. And, and true diversity is about challenge yourself and being able to cha- listen to those difficult voices, and then having conversations, and being all right with conflict, that's how we learn, that is what education is about, it's about the cognitiveness and showing them that. And, and truly, I am getting tired. I, I, and, 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 and I know I've only sampled a little bit, but, of this, but, um, I would ask us to really, challenge us to think about what it truly means to be diversity, and really, if we really want it, not just get people who sing to the choir. And I don't know what that means, um, in writing, um, because truly, we do all have passion for Winewski. The question is, are we truly listening to each other to kind of move forward, or are we just shouting at each other, which is a waste of energy?
Energy, time, and time, yeah. And that lens for the community engagement is a big deal as well, right, to be able to have that civil discussion.
Civil is the key word.
Across a broad base of topics that you e- you can and you don't necessarily have to agree with, but you have to have that discussion. How we wrap that into the newsletter topics is, I, I think, you know, you, you certainly cut the, cut a path with the, with that, and I...
I don't get it anymore.
Do you get cut off, Winewski?
Yes, I don't get the Winewski School District newsletter anymore.
Should go to every household, we pay for that to happen.
I know we do, and I used to get it, I'm getting it now.
I'll have to contact her.
I got you.
All right, to keep thing, okay, sorry.
Well, it also might be worthwhile, and I think for students as well, like, to talk about, so what do you do with the discomfort? You know, it's, because it's really about handling your own fragility, of someone else's lived experiences being different from yours, and what do you do with that? And I think that that's a, a worthy topic to explore, is how do we, as a community, talk about really hard stuff that needs to be said? And, and if, and if we're modeling for students, we gotta know how to be uncomfortable and, and, and be civil in our discomfort around that, so we can all grow together.
And once again, you know, I think our school board members in this community on this modeled that behavior. We have the-
In that meeting?
In, in, no, here, just in general, are, we are not afraid to have these difficult conversations. We obviously disagree, but we also come to consensus, there's been enough evidence in these school board meetings, right? But it's teaching the community on how to do these kind of things, you know?
Learning together.
And learning, right, exactly, you know?
Yeah.
And, and, and once again, I'm also, like I said, white, for, you know, we can talk about white fragility and all that, it's lots of people's fragility, right? Like, I've been getting microgress from all white and colored people, uh, people of color, sorry. People of color on, on that language, and I'm going like, okay, y'all, like, where are you? Come on. I only got so many ti- I only got so much time, and I'm now exhausted.
Maybe that is the focus of our community engagement.
It's a learning piece of it.
At least give us a topic to look at.
Right.
At least form something around.
Something around that, because that made me think the joint meeting was a, was good evidence in how do we have those conversations?
We already have a list of people we would like to invite. Right, I think, I think we're starting to develop that, over time.
And maybe we can, you know, look at models like Parents for Change, that they get a bunch of people out, and they're having those kinds of conversations. You know, we can see what's already happening out there, too. and they're having those kinds of conversations, you know, we can see what's already happening out there too.
You know, my, my sense is, is that the choir is who comes, right? If the choir, wouldn't be the choir.
Right.
There are, quite frankly, the other groups. I think there are groups who have, who are resistant to this conversation and to, and who simply will not move, right?
They may not move, but we can bring them to the table.
Okay, but see, that, and that's, but you, I'm, that's not a conversation that I am willing, interested in having. I'm not interested in dealing with that kind of rigidity, inflexibility.
Yes, no, I agree.
Offensive behavior.
I agree.
To try to move somebody from point A to point A minus.
I don't know about moving them as much as it is having them in on the discussion, but it has to be agreed upfront that it isn't gonna end up being a match of wills that I'm gonna win over you no matter what it takes. It's gonna be a discussion on topics, again, we gotta come up with the right topics to, to deal with. But to get that vo- to get the voices in the room, to have the discussion across the table and prove to ourselves, us and the others that come, that we can actually have that discussion in peace. It may not leave changing anybody's mind, but I don't think that's the goal.
But it might not also be peaceful. I mean, I think that, I think maybe that's what you're speaking to is that, there's rigidity and being stuck in their own.
Right, discussion involves using language and terms that are offensive to people. I, I don't care what your position is, you know, right? That's not a conversation that I wanna be a part of.
Correct, but we can fix that.
That last meeting and then the two, the city council meet, two city council meetings before were, really, I was astonished by the sentiments that were publicly expressed in the presence of people of color. And I'm not gonna do that, right? I am not going to sit in the midst of that kind of conversation and try to court someone to do whatever it is we, we want them to do, right? I think that's a conversation, I don't know, I mean, Alex might be willing to do it. I'm not, I'm not willing to do that.
And, and the part that.
I think part of it depends on how, how we frame this.
And, and the reasons why we're having the conversation, right? What's the outcome?
What we want, what we want to come from.
And part of it, what's unfair in a lot of ways that what Margaret's talking about is that when these outbursts come out, it usually comes out because someone in like, on the council invites them and it does not prepare the rest of the community to be prepared to have it. That's what's unfair.
That's what's been happening, yes.
And that's what is happening, right? And so I think us, in some ways, being proactive and inviting them in some way, but laying out the ground rules so that we understand where we are. It becomes better prepared because in the long run, we become collateral, people of color become collateral damage in this.
So I'll, I'll let you guys take the first pass at trying to mold something. We gotta move along here though, I think that hopefully gets a good, good starting point.
Yeah, make sure we coincide and tell that.
This next item I wanna touch very briefly because I think we can get down through the rest of this. I know the interest of time here. The board agenda and the backup data format is coming a little bit differently than it has been in the past. I'm struggling with it, but if that's only me, I'm okay, I'll go figure it out.
Are you struggling with the organization within the folder?
Just both the, the organization in the folder, finding the folder, but having three different file formats and not having the ability to put my comments in there. What I was being able to do with the other one is being able to do, as I read down through it, put my comments in there somehow to be able to, so I didn't have to have a written, you know, a printed copy so I could.
So you could write right on the document.
I could.
Fill in, like you're a little like, highlight this, highlight that, speak to that.
I wanna talk about this, I wanna remember to talk about this.
And you can no longer have that techy access.
You can download all the files to your own computer.
What's that?
You can download all the files onto your own computer and do that.
And the.
Do you both have the same?
Yeah, instead of like, instead of like, before what was happening was like, we would get all the files and then you would download, right? Right now, it's just that these files are in a central location. You just go to the folder and then like, you write, like, download all files.
That may be part of my issue.
And then once you do that, then you can, the only hard part about that is when Sean says like, wait, this was updated in between the time when you download. And, and so my only recommendation on that is that there needs to be a timestamp on like, like when Chris, I apologize, Krista?
Krista, yeah.
When Krista sends the files on Friday, it is essentially locked and she just needs to notify you if any changes made to the document. And then you can either say this was added to the S-drive that this was a change, you can notice the change. But really, all you have to do is download all the files.
Okay, and I think that's part of the problem, trying to do that now and that doesn't happen, so.
Right.
I probably have to get a new medium to deal with these. Everybody else okay with them?
Well, Google Drive and Google in general are like, kind of verboten at the Howard Center, so it was a little easy when they were just emailing to us.
Yeah.
But I mean, I've.
I'm a Google Drive, complete handicap on a Google Drive, and I use it at work, so.
And really, I think it's, I'll just need to show you here, 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 this button, download all, and then you're good.
Okay, if you can find it, I'd be happy. Anybody else, otherwise we'll leave it the same the way it is and.
But will it download them all in the same format? Because that was something.
No, because all the, because she puts three mo- so she'll like, it'll download all the files?
Yeah.
And then you do that to decide which ones, which format you wanna use.
So I can have her, because we keep a separate folder and then we transfer it to your shared folder. So we could put everything in there as a PDF.
And I'm fine with that.
If that's gonna be helpful to you.
I mean, that would work.
And then things won't be changed.
Right.
But.
That would work a whole lot better for me because I understand, I, I can deal with the PDF, but you know, the Word documents where I've got view only and I can't do any edit. I gotta find places to make notes and stuff, so.
Yeah, no, the only type of files that kinda, I wish every now and then were PDF or Excel because sometimes I like doing my own calculations. But that's, but that's me and like, I shouldn't be doing side calculations.
The other caveat, the other caveat to that that I'll say doesn't, we don't wanna have in a PDF is your. Your, your report, your superintendent's report, because you put links in there from time to time and if you put it in a PDF.
Well, if a PDF works, the links will work.
The links will work in a PDF?
You just have to hit Control, Control click.
Okay.
And this is why we need students here and, this is why we need students here to kinda update us on some of the technology.
I'm for that, all right, I'll, I'll go figure it out. Policies, student attendance, we have the current one. We have the current one and the VSBA model.
Yeah, I don't know.
On student attendance, I think these two were pretty much identical if I'm not mistaken, right? These were the two that were pretty much the same.
Mm-hmm.
And anything in here, Sean, that causes you?
No.
Or the team any angst?
No.
Okay. So we will, any changes that you would recommend there?
No, I'm gonna double check again on the legal references and the cross-references, look up to date. But other than that, no changes on my end.
All right, so any concerns about using the one we have in place now?
No.
Okay, so that'll be back in our, that'll be back in our consent agenda next month. Educational support system, this one was pretty radically different if I remember right. Between the hour, not radically, but it was definitely different. That the VSBA model was like, the brevity was incredible. I kept looking for another page, doesn't have enough in it, though it's short.
For me, I like our policy because of the definite, I think the definitions are helpful to somebody who in the public may not understand all the jargon and if they're looking at this policy, the definitions help to understand it.
All right, and then the procedures with this one were deeply.
Yes.
So most of this one is contained in the, in the procedures.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Everybody, anybody have any concerns about staying with the one we have now based on Sean's recommendation? Okay, so we'll see that one again in the consent agenda when it comes back. And this one here, policy four seven, I'm not sure this got posted the right piece.
Normally, we bring out the board members' conduct in March when we bring on new board members.
But this isn't a monitoring report in this format. This is just the, I think this was, what I saw in here was just the, the policy itself.
Have we signed it?
Just the code of conduct, I thought we did in March.
You did.
Okay.
Yeah, pretty sure. But the format here wasn't the, it was just the policy itself.
See, I did have a question.
Okay.
In, in the first one, it says loyalty to the ownership, what does that mean?
We do things in the best interest of the ownership.
But, but who is that? And, and I bring this up because.
It's a great question.
Yeah.
I think lately when we've been talking about this community and what we do, we always default to the taxpayers and that, and it defines a certain thing.
Well.
Yeah, no, I don't think this is taxpayer, we've had a lot of discussion over the, on this over the years.
There's a great visual for that for policy governance, like who the, who the owners are. Because I think it's a, you know, a different variation of stakeholders.
Right.
While it can, I think, be somewhat synonymous, I think it includes.
Definitely not taxpayers.
Right, but, and I just want us to be careful when we use words like ownership because then it seems like it's only about the homeowners, right?
Right, and that's.
And it's not, and I would like some clarity, like parentheses.
Those with an interest in the outcomes, I think is the.
To really demonstrate.
Simplest way to.
The equity of like, this is every, we're, we're not dedicated just to the homeowners, we're dedicated to the people who care about the city of Winewski.
There is a, there is a visual for this somewhere, I'm looking, I'm not finding it. It describes it, because it's, it's a policy governance word.
Right, right.
My assumption is that's where we came into it.
Has nothing to do with homeownership, for sure.
It's a pretty broad statement.
Right.
Or.
And even just a simple footnote.
Do we wanna bring this back and adjust that?
Sure.
Yeah, I would bring it back with a footnote asterisk on it.
So when we do the, when we do it, we'll, we'll, we'll bring it back and put something in there. Okay, so we'll, we'll nix that one and then the governance, the governance one was the, um, the monitoring report, that was four point eight. And this one had, this one was updated. Any concerns with the governance piece? We usually take this one up at the, at the retreat with, but we can, we've got it right here, so.
I would just say that like, I think all of, I mean, what's not mentioned in the interpretation or the data is that like, a lot of us actually go to the board retreats or, and, and we're not recording that in here as evidence. I mean, we go, I mean, we went to the superintendent joint chair meeting. We, I don't know how many of us actually watched the VSBA's like online learning webinars and saw the.
This one's governance investment. No, this is, this is our investing in our, oh, you're right, right.
It's about the continuing education and the interpretation. And that's the data evidence that, you know, we should actually hold each other accountable by sharing what are the things that we actually are doing to show that we are invested in our education on board governance. And board stuff.
Yep, that's a, that's a good point. Do you wanna, how do we take a crack at putting that in here?
I, I, I mean, in one sense, I mean, do people remember, like, are we tracking? I mean, I know that I've sat through at least two of the webinars and it really is an individual. And then I went to the BSBA, I know three of, you know, what are the things that we're all doing? And I think that's a data point that we can now hold each other accountable if we really mean.
Let me, so, so what I, what I'll recommend then is, rather than having this be a stagnant document, if we can make it a little more living as we go along. So if we're, if we're okay with this one as it is, I can start editing this based on what we come up with as we go through the year.
Yeah.
And then next time we bring it back next year, it'll have those references in it.
And, and policy four point eight point three, we need to change because we are limiting ourselves to August.
Yeah, 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 and that is in the policy itself.
I was really awake on Sunday.
At the board retreat, we'll, we'll change that to at the board retreat.
That's better.
And that'll change the timing of it.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just awake on Sunday when I was reading all this.
Yep, no, I will, I'll change that one in before it comes back. And then the data says we do it at our annual retreat, so it'll at least line up. We actually had that discussion when we accepted the policies in the first place. And we decided we were doing the retreat in August, so that made sense at that time until we moved it to September and didn't change the policy. Okay, I'll make that, I'll make that change and I'll, I'll add a little bit to the, to the detailed piece of it, the data piece. All right. Reminders, retreat eight to one Saturday. At the, the Delta Hotel is the.
Old Trader Dukes.
Trader Dukes.
Old Doubletree.
The Doubletree.
Yeah.
And as a quick text had sought to try to get you thinking about, one of the things we're gonna start with is the board with a look back over the year and a look forward over the next, hopes, thoughts. And then Sean and his team will come with the same. And then we've got some other items on the agenda as well.
Yeah, and that'll go out tomorrow morning, I didn't wanna put it out before tonight to.
Okay.
Overload.
Yep, all right, and then walk to school day on October two. I'll walk with you guys in spirit for whoever shows up. I'm not gonna be in a, in the local area. And then September eighteenth, early dismissal. Anything else? I know we went a little bit long tonight, appreciate that. All right, we do have warrants to sign for those that haven't. I would accept a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.